Good evening. Welcome. I'd like to welcome you all to the Monday, March 28, 2016, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Again, welcome. We're delighted you're all here with us this evening. We have a number of proclamations and special presentations, so we're happy that so many folks are in attendance tonight. If I could, I'd like to start with the first two proclamations, which I'm going to read together. And when I'm through, the folks who have been involved with these proclamations, I would ask to come to the dais. They're welcome to say a few words and also come up for a picture with City Council if they'd like. So let me go ahead with that, get into the first proclamation if I could. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for the victims of abuse. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas all children, or all citizens, should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse programs succeed because of the meaningful partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas the planting of the pinwheel garden is to raise awareness of the ramifications of child abuse and how it can be prevented. Whereas we encourage witnesses of child abuse and neglect to report it to Child Protective Services at 703-324-7000. Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families, thereby preventing child abuse and neglect, and strengthening the communities which we live. I have another resolution or proclamation I'd like to read as well. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is a serious problem affecting women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, educational, and economic backgrounds throughout the city. The Commonwealth, the nation, and the world, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. Whereas to increase awareness about this issue and prevent future crimes, the month of April has been designated as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be the victims of rape or attempted rape at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be established as a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas sexual abuse induces psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for the survivors of abuse, and students who experience sexual contact against their will exhibit higher rates of many risky behaviors and display significantly lower academic achievement than their peers. Whereas we must work together to raise the profile and educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and the importance of speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs begin with awareness, education, and community involvement, and these programs succeed because of the meaningful partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas the City of Falls Church Police Department, along with a growing network of law enforcement and other organizations throughout the state, seeks to eliminate the prevalence of sexual violence by educating women through a free self-defense class that has educated over 800 women in risk reduction and self-defense. Whereas victims need an array of social services to heal from the trauma of sexual assault, including crisis intervention, 24-hour sexual assault hotlines, medical and criminal justice accompaniment, advocacy and counseling. And essential to this effort are the victim service providers who work tirelessly to help victims transfer from victim to survivor. Whereas fitting to recognize the many compassionate and dedicated individuals who provide service to survivors, work to hold perpetrators accountable, and continually strive to increase public awareness of the significant problem. Whereas when we're actively involved, we can prevent sexual violence and create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, I, David Tarter, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, join advocates and communities across the nation in taking action to prevent sexual violence, and do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to preventing sexual assault and the support of survivors, thereby improving the quality of life for all of our citizens and strengthening the community in which we live. Thank you. Do we have maybe the folks who are involved in these proclamations? Could they come forward right now? You're welcome to say a few words as well if you'd like, and thank you for your fine work.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Thank you. I'm Les Lynn Barrow with Housing and Human Services. We'd like to thank Council for the participation in the dedication of our pinwheel garden, which represents what we want for every child: a happy, safe, and carefree childhood. Thank you, Ms. Hardy. We really appreciate you dedicating the garden this evening. We, in Housing and Human Services, have been looking forward for this opportunity to participate in National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we thank all those who came out to support the cause. At one point, we adults were all children, and I think in retrospect, we can now realize how vulnerable, innocent, and childlike we were. We depended on adults for care, protection, for getting us to where we are today. So now it's our turn as parents, members of the community, law enforcement, educators, to care for and to protect one of the most vulnerable in our society: children. So as mentioned in this year's theme, "Prevent Child Abuse and Neglect; Educate, Guide, and Protect," we are taking this opportunity to remind that child abuse and neglect have always existed, that it still exists, and it affects every segment of every community, and that it occurs in many forms, such as sexual, physical, and emotional. So the majority of child abuse cases originate from situations and conditions that can be preventable when communities, programs, and systems are engaged and supportive. A community that cares about early childhood development, parental support, and parental mental health, for instance, is more likely to foster nurturing families and healthy children. So research has identified factors known to prevent and reduce child abuse and neglect. These factors include parental resilience, nurturing and attachment, social connections, knowledge about parenting and child development, social and emotional competence of children, and concrete support for parents. So to raise awareness of child abuse and to provide information on preventive measures, Housing and Human Services now has a section on our website dedicated to child abuse awareness and prevention. So there we can learn more about preventing child abuse and find resources and programs for families. And so on our website, for a direct link to it, it's the fallschurchvirginia.gov/humanservices. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present the proclamation. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Chief Gavin, welcome.
Thank you. Council, I just wanted to thank you for publicly acknowledging the Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month. As a public servant, I'm honored to serve this city. And as we all know, the city has been through some very difficult, challenging times, and the children of this city have taken us through these challenging times. And we're at this place where we've come to healing and bringing the community together. A couple of things about this profession that make it so great is serving those most vulnerable populations at the most critical times. And one of the things I wanted to highlight, in terms of the international chiefs of police make as a priority, is sexual assault against women and children. And the reason being is you break down the Part I offenses, the most violent, vile crimes against persons, most of those victims are women. And so they make that a priority, and they concentrate on those victims to prevent, or intervene, or defend those children and/or women. And the children of this city have done that for the community. So I'd like to take my hat off to them. The other thing I'd like to just identify for the community as well is those people that are intervening, or defending, or investigating, and/or enforcing the crimes in and around that. And one person that I wanted to highlight today, and what you've probably seen in the news press regularly and/or in some of her investigations, is Detective Cherie Jonda. And Cherie heads up a number of preventative programs here in the city, and is probably one of the largest community outreach policing programs that I've ever been aware of in this region, and it's the Rape Aggression Defense Course, which we have done over 12 years. So I'm going to ask Cherie to come up here and talk a little bit about that, because I think it's probably one of the most important community outreaches that we do here in the city. So Cherie, if you'd come on up.
Thank you. The Repression Defense Program is something that our department has been lucky enough to offer to the community for close to 15 years now. It's a program that's provided free to women and children in their community, and we also extend it to other communities as well. We've been privileged enough to offer it to some of the ladies in our high schools, and also we've worked with other jurisdictions in Prince William County, Fairfax, and other surrounding jurisdictions. Part of that program that we offer is not only self-defense techniques, but self-awareness and also empowerment. Sometimes being a victim can affect all parts of your life. So what we also want to teach women is how to overcome those issues and also to work towards getting through your life. We don't want women to be scared to live, so our program helps women to deal with those feelings and also to help each other. Another program that the City of Falls Church is involved in is called ICAC. It's an Internet Crimes Against Children program, and that's a partnership of 61 task forces, over 3,000 law enforcement agencies. That's city, state, and local law enforcement agencies that help combat Internet crimes against children and cyber investigations that we all partnership through. That task force works to educate children, parents, and also the community on how to observe what's going on on the Internet and getting their parents involved in what their children are doing on the Internet. So a lot of these programs that the City of Falls Church is involved in will help us to prevent and work towards eliminating some of the things of sexual assault and also abuse against children. We also have one of our volunteers here that's involved in our RAD program. That's Kathleen Dempsey. She's been a volunteer with us for over 10 years.
Hi. Good evening. I've had the privilege of working on the RAD program now for 10-plus years as a volunteer, and it's particularly important to me, the program, and also what you're doing here, because I was a former victim of a crime, and that incident really altered the way that I lived my life afterwards. And that changed for the better when I went through the RAD program. So I am so honored now and privileged to be able to be a part of it. And as a team, we have, over the last 10-plus years, just seen hundreds of women go through and come out more empowered and with confidence and better prepared to defend themselves if they needed to. We've gone into high schools and brought it to young people. There's a lot of young people that come through our program. It's just been fantastic. It also teaches a lot about awareness and prevention, so it just better equips women to go through their day-to-day lives in a safer manner. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I'm Luke Kinetic, and you're representing We Support the Girls as much as anything else, which is an organization that's committed in a very non-political way to kind of carry forward and be a force for good. I just simply want to acknowledge that this official show of support and visible leadership support, I think, is a very important step in what we know can happen in terms of non-official support and setting the conditions both to prevent any, you know, future attacks, is kind of the term that comes to my mind, and to foster and set the right conditions in this community and wider for support if and when there is another attack. So it's deeply appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy, did you have anything to say?
I'm just available to answer any questions if anybody had any questions.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Certainly, you'd have an opportunity if you wished to speak at this point. If not, I would just like to say that the pinwheel ceremony that immediately preceded this meeting tonight, for those of you who weren't able to attend, was very moving and a very nice event. This is a really important issue. I think we all understand that. It impacts our most vulnerable members of our community, and I think tonight has given us the impetus to dedicate our efforts to raise public awareness of this issue, to educate our children and our community, to make sure we report any suspected behavior, and ultimately to support the victims. So I want to thank all of you, particularly the children, for your hard work in getting tonight where it is and for moving this issue along. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything? If not, again, thank you for coming out, all of you, tonight. Okay. We have another proclamation which relates to equal pay. Vice Mayor Conley?
Mr. Mayor? Did you want to present the proclamations?
So I have both the proclamations, and anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward, certainly the chief and others, but why don't anyone who wishes to come forward, come on up right now, and we'd be delighted to have you part of the proceeding of the proclamation. Yes, sure. Councilwoman Hardy?
Just a quick thing to add. I hope everyone has a chance to visit the pinwheel garden out there, and for those of you who actually want to be able to take a pinwheel home and kind of show appreciation and honoring of the month, there's some pinwheels outside the chambers as well.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Conley, are we ready for the next proclamation?
This is a proclamation declaring April 12, 2006, as Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2014 typically earned 79% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas, according to graduating to a pay gap, the 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas, in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap. And now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than a half-million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas, nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly 2/3 are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas, a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement, unless income counted in a Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas, the state-by-state rankings released a part of the AAUW's 2016 research report, the simple truth about the gender pay gap show that in Virginia, women working full-time year-round in 2014 typically earned 80% of what men earned. And whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both public and private sectors. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Tuesday, April 12, symbolizes the time in 2016 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year.
All right. Now therefore, I, David Tarter, the Mayor of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12, as Equal Pay Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an eternal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Is there anyone in the audience who's going to receive this proclamation today? Come on down. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to. Welcome.
Thank you. And really, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I do want to thank you for recognizing this day. It is important, and as you said in the proclamation, April 12 represents, between January 1 and April 12, represents the number of days, on average, a woman would have to work in order to have earned as much in that, from the 1st of January 2015 all the way through April 12, 2016, to earn as much as the average man would have earned in 2015 alone. So those extra days, well, they speak for themselves.
Thank you very much. Why don't you come on up, and we can give you the proclamation, and your colleagues Thank you all. Okay. We have one more proclamation. Mr. Snyder, would you do the honors?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to read a proclamation declaring April 3 through 9, 2016, as Local Government Education Week. Whereas since the colonial period, the Commonwealth of Virginia has closely held the institutions of local government, and whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the cities of the communities they serve. And whereas, citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreational opportunities in educating local children are most often delivered at the local level. And whereas, in recognition of the week performed by local governments on February 29, 2012, the Virginia General Assembly designated the first week in April as Local Government Education Week in Virginia. And whereas, April 2, 1908, was the creation of the council-manager form of government in the City of Stanton, thereby making the first week in April appropriate for this designation. And whereas, throughout the year, the city government has supported several educational opportunities, including hosting several scout troops to learn about local government, a visit from a mayor to a third-grade elementary school class, facilitating Operation Earthwatch programs, conducting field trips to the Solid Waste and Recycling Center, and mentoring students under Urban Forestry Field Class Program.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3 through the 9, 2016, as Local Government Education Week in the City of Falls Church, and further proclaim the City of Falls Church government and the Falls Church City Schools will partner to promote the civic education engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthen the sense of community, and engage the next generation of local government managers. Ms. Messner, are you here to receive the proclamation?
Yes, I'd be honored to, on behalf of all local government employees and school employees and the youth of this community, then working together to help build community. And the proclamation just lists a few examples, but we're really pleased to further that effort, and we've added some more additional resources. I've showed in the past our young elementary school book. Now we have one for the older elementary that really talks about all the services and things that we heard about today with public safety prevention, including at-risk youth. So we're really pleased to do this locally, and on behalf of the Virginia Local Government Managers Association, of which Wy and I are both members, this is a statewide initiative, and we appreciate that the City of Falls Church is actively involved as well.
Thank you, and thank you for your fine work. Frankly, all of you on local government, I think, are the unsung heroes of the community. I think in many ways, you're what makes the city special. The high level of service and dedication to work day in and day out, the almost unheard-of service that I think our community receives compared to other jurisdictions in the region really make this place, this city, a special place. So we want to thank you for all your fine work. And why don't you all come up, including maybe the city manager and city attorney, to receive this as well? Sure. Mike, would you like to come up and join us? Mr. Collins? Anyone else in local government? If you're here, come on up. Come on down. Tom, anyone else in the audience? Okay. I think that's it for the proclamations for this evening. Do we have any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
Is there anybody here to receive their oath of office this evening? No, sir.
Okay. Why don't we move on to the summary of written comments then, please?
We had several comments on the budget. Justin Kirby, 210 Fairfax Street, asked for funding for four police officers and two dispatchers in the budget. Cheryl McGrath opposes an increase in the personal property tax. Bill Ackerman of 149 South Springs Street asked that the neighborhood traffic calming program be funded in the FY17 budget. Gary Laporta, a city employee and City Hall Task Force member for the Chamber of Commerce, urged the council to approve the contract with Studio 27 to begin work on city hall renovations. The Library Board of Trustees forwarded a letter in support of the FY17 budget and capital improvement plan, which contains funding for the upgrade and expansion of the library. Is in favor of proceeding without a referendum on the project because the cost is less than 10% of the FY17 operating budget. In development, Lisa Veruxis, 301 Grove Avenue, submitted concerns about the W and O D master plan. She also said the insight development proposal is inconsistent with the planned Opportunity Area Plan, and asked why the document was adopted if it is not. Area Plan, and asked why the document was adopted if it is not to be followed. The Spring Street advocacy group forwarded several pages of questions and comments regarding Tradition Place, and John and Kristy Bell of 112 South Springs Street forwarded comments regarding Tradition Place. We also received nine comments from Winter Hill residents in support of the residential parking restriction ordinance. And we have several thank yous from Melissa Dana of 314 North Lee Street. Thanked the staff at the Saturday Budget Hall, Town Hall, and Open House. Johanna Berry, 111 East Jefferson, thanked the council for reconsidering the Crossman Park matter. Ms. Abadie's 3rd grade class at Thomas Jefferson Elementary wrote to thank Mayor Tarter for visiting their classroom. And Juanita and Tom Bowman of 114 Gresham Place thanked the council for listening to concerns about the Crossman Park matter. And other items, Linda Camel of Lawton Street asked for dog waste stations in Madison Park, and Betty Patera, 912 Park Avenue, asked for the removal of signs in the crosswalks at the W and O D trail.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move to public comment. We only have two speakers at the present. If you wish to speak, please submit a pink speaker slip. Looks like we've got a few more than two. So go ahead and submit your speaker slip if you wish to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and I'm going to be a little stricter about the time than I was last time. So just keep in mind that to get through everyone, we do need to keep our comments to three minutes, even if you may not be able to say every little last thing you want to say. You can communicate with us by email or other means to get your points across. I'm going to start with Troop 681, who are here for Communication Merit Badge. If you guys would like to come forward and say hello, we'd love to see you. And if you'd like to get your picture taken up here, we'd be delighted to do that as So you're Troop 681, St. James? Is that right? Well, come on up. Welcome.
May I defer and speak at Agenda Item 11?
Yes, you may. Yes, you may. Sure. I made a note of it. Our next speaker is Dee Ellison.
Yes, thank you. I would also like to defer to Agenda Item 11.
Okay. Our next speaker is, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, Cassie Ramsey? Oh, Rami.
Post-graduate Cassie Ramsey, sir. I'd also like to defer to Item 10 A1.
Okay. Lena Maralwick? I'm sorry.
I would also like to defer.
Okay. All right. How about Allison Kuchman? Where are you, Allison? I saw you just a moment ago. Would you like to speak now?
I do not want to defer. I want to go home and eat my dinner.
That sounds good.
Good evening. Thank you all, city, and everyone who did the Saturday Open House. I really appreciate that. That was great, very helpful. And I just want to speak a little bit about the event we had out in front of the library, the planting of the Pinwheel Garden. I think that was great, and I think that the city is on its way to healing, and it was great to see everybody out there. And I just want to ask people to start thinking about, and this is not my original thought, someone sent me a TED Talks on this the other day, about the concept of willful blindness. And it's when we just sort of accept certain things, and we know things are wrong, and we don't say anything. And that's part of what happened in our community, is there was things going on, and you're part of, and so we know what happened, but I think that we need to stand together and start speaking up. And I've been very outspoken about things since I moved here, and I'm not going to change anytime soon. I'm going to keep doing that. I know it makes people uncomfortable, but I just call a spade a spade. And I just ask that each of us dig deep and figure out how we can do that. I was talking to someone who serves on a board, and he said, Allison, you know, what am I supposed to do? I'm only one person. And I'm just one person, but you just stand up and you say, you know what, I'm calling this, I think this is wrong. And I think we just need to do that. I mean, I'm frustrated with the school budget, that we have this whole process, but there's no program analysis of how much things cost, and whether the teachers like a certain program. They're pushing for a teacher survey, which, you know, the teachers, there's a lot of teachers who feel, quite frankly, that they're oppressed in our school. And I understand there's, you know, more than a dozen staff are leaving TJ at the end of this year, and on and on, and there's things, it's uncomfortable. We don't want to, but we can't fix things we don't know are broken. And whether it's, you know, not delivering Microsoft tablets to children, economically disadvantaged childrens that participate in the Wilden Program, and those people that know that that happened, and they know why it happened, but we're all just looking the other way, and we're not going to talk about it. And we're adults, and I think it's time we stand up and raise the bar as a community and say enough is enough. And if we want answers about Mount Daniel, we get to ask, and we get answers. And even if the answers are uncomfortable, it's something we need to talk about. And I think by putting stuff out there and saying, I'm not going to participate in willful blindness, it only makes our community better. You know, conflict and talking about uncomfortable things is where we grow. And I think there's room for growth here, and I'm proud of everyone that was out there today. And so I just am asking everyone in this room to dig deep and be a person that stands up when you see something that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the last speaker we have at this point. So why don't we go on? Are there any council requests, or should we go on to the report of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I'd like to thank the clerk and the deputy clerk for their efforts to reach out to the boards and commissions to gauge their interest in participating in the Youth Representatives Initiative. The Citizens for Better City Group is choosing a second class of youth representatives, the non-voting students who serve on our boards and commissions. And about half of the boards and commissions have responded that they're interested in participating. Still have a few more to go. At any rate, the council has improved that program a couple of years ago, and I just wanted to say thanks for the help to get the second class of students chosen. Should happen in the next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other council requests, or should we go on to the report of the city manager? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a few things to report. One, the city's public work staff and planning staff has been working with the city council and the EDA on updating some of the furniture, and street lighting, bike racks in the downtown commercial quarters of the city. And we have ordered much of the material. We'll be ordering the benches, new benches, very shortly. Our goal is this spring to get some of the fresher street furniture out on the street as part of sort of a springtime refresh. The new lighting will be installed in the coming weeks as well. That will provide a brighter, we believe, a more attractive light at nighttime for our downtown commercial districts, making the district more walkable and a more attractive place to be. So there'll be more information on this, but I just want the community to know that these improvements are coming. The larger downtown improvements, i.e. streetscape improvements going up towards the State Theater or up to the State Theater on both sides of North Washington Street, that's a project that will be early summer and into the summer months as we bring the brick sidewalks and the streetscape design up to sort of the core of our arts and cultural district on North Washington Street. So I wanted the council and the community to have that update and those good things that will be coming. On the George Mason Campus Project, I want to announce that we will be hosting two town hall meetings. First one this Wednesday, two days from now, at 7:00 PM at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. That's Wednesday, March 30th at 7:00 PM. And a second one on Wednesday, April 6th, here at City Council Chambers, also at 7:00 PM. And the purpose of these town hall meetings is just to provide the community with an update on the RFP process, and provide as much information as we can at this point on the school program, a range of the expected cost for the school program, strategies that we're considering for financing that cost, what some of the pros and benefits, and issues that we're considering with that. We'll discuss the potential value for a portion of the city-owned land that can be part of the strategy for financing the school. If we were to sell a portion of the school campus for economic development, and how future tax revenues from that development could also be part of the financing strategy. So our goal is to put more information out to the public than we have in the past, just in terms of our basic strategic thinking, so that as the council considers taking the next step of issuing the request for detailed proposal, which is currently scheduled for consideration on the night of your meeting of April 11th, that we'll have that good baseline of information out in the public, so people are aware of what it is we're thinking just in the broad strategic terms of this project. So again, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and then Wednesday, April 6th, also at 7:00 PM, those two town hall meetings. And there'll be lots of information going out on those through all of our normal ways. When we get to the budget items, I'll also talk about some of the budget meetings that we'll have coming up, but I'll wait until we get to the budget items for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Shields? If not, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the first item, then?
Yes, under Second Readings of Ordinances and Items Requiring Public Hearings, we have TO 16-01, Ordinance to Amend Chapter 26, Article 2 of the City Code with Respect to Residential Parking Restrictions.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes, as a prudential matter, I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 26. I am a resident of the Winter Hill Project, and therefore, I am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this ordinance amendment. Nevertheless, I can participate in this transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. The ordinance that's before the council now for second reading is a fairly simple ordinance. It simply would change the parking restrictions that are sort of in the menu book or the toolkit that city administration uses when we receive petitions for residential parking regulations citywide. Currently, what the City Code calls for is that the city decal, which you buy as proof of that you've paid your car tax, would serve as the parking permit. And that's been on the books since 2008, essentially as an administrative efficiency issue, but also previously as part of a strategy that the council had enshrined in the code, which said, if you pay taxes in the city, then you can park essentially on any city street, even if there are residential parking regulations in effect. So this ordinance would change that and allow that in parking zones where the city manager determines that a separate parking sticker is appropriate, the decal would not serve as the parking decal, but rather that special sticker that's issued by the city would serve as the parking permit or decal. So that's what the ordinance is that's before the city council. I do know you have a number of speakers on this item tonight, and I wanted to speak to what we've been working with the Winter Hill neighborhood in particular. We received, and we anticipated when the West Broad Project was approved, that there would need to be parking regulations in the Winter Hill neighborhood. And we anticipated that, and when the HOAs reached out to us to continue that discussion and talk about implementation, we've been working closely with representatives of the homeowners association there, and I think moving forward very effectively. I want to commend Jeff Sykes as being the principal staff lead, been working with his particular neighborhood. And we do anticipate that the model that we'll use here, the type of sticker design, the way that we'll handle visitor permits, visitor passes, and all these types of things will set the model for new regulations that we might roll out in other parts of the city that are areas adjacent to denser development that's been subject to a special exception or a rezoning. And so the work we're doing here, we believe will serve as a model as we go forward. You will have speakers tonight that will address an issue that's completely separate, and has been separate in my mind, and I think separate in the HOA's mind as well, and I'll express that view. In our discussions, I have alerted the HOA members that with redevelopment projects in the city, the city very frequently requests that the city have right to go onto private property and to the parking garages of the new projects to enforce the decals, just to ensure that the property taxes have been paid. We view that as basically good government, it's tax equity. It helps everybody who pays their taxes to know that those laws are being enforced equitably and consistently across the city. In our larger residential projects, that can be impossible because we're not granted access to the property to do that enforcement. That's why it's now standard for any development proposal that comes to the city. That's built into the proffers, so that we have that access. And many property owners grant that access voluntarily. Again, this is a separate issue, but I've made that request of the HOA in this case, that that permission be granted to the city, again, for these neighborhoods. And essentially what the request would be, that the parking enforcement officer, and it's typically most common in the month of November, December, after the decals are issued, that the parking enforcement officer be allowed to have access on the private lots of these associations for the purpose of decal enforcement. And for that reason, that issue has not been resolved. I do believe it is a separate issue from the parking regulations that we're talking about on the street, on Annandale, and on James Street, and on Gundry. But nonetheless, I want the council to be aware of the issue, at least from the administration's perspective of the discussions we've been having, and I'm sure you'll hear other comments on that tonight as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Shields, or any other staff? Ms. Connolly, then Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Shields, you just mentioned something that I'm pretty sure you answered, but I just need to ask a clarifying question. With this ordinance, this applies to every neighborhood, not specifically Winter Hill. Is that right, or is this specifically Winter Hill? What we're doing with this ordinance is giving you permission to decide which neighborhoods are able to have the separate stickers.
This, what this ordinance does is provides the administration the ability, when you work with the neighborhood, to consider whether a separate decal should be issued, or whether the city decal would be the permit for parking. We believe that in areas that are adjacent to new redevelopment, a separate sticker is most likely to be the most appropriate enforcement mechanism, rather than simply the city decal.
But once this ordinance is passed, then when we have our next development, Mason Row, for example, if that neighborhood requests a similar sticker, that's not going to have to come through council. Again, that will be up to you as the city manager and staff to determine how that works.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And what's the cost of the enforcement? And I know the staff report says $5,000. Is that just the initial cost? Are there enforcement costs or maintenance costs that we're going to have to think about over the years?
The principal cost will be printing and distributing the stickers, printing and distributing the visitor passes, and installing the signs. And so that's the range of costs that are provided in the staff report.
And then what about the staff costs to actually enforce?
Those are not included in that cost. These are sort of hard costs for materials that are tallied up here.
Okay.
Mr. Duncan, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, the staff recommendation, as I read it, says, "Staff recommends deferring approval of this item to April 11th pending resolution of outstanding issues with respect to the residential parking program." Are those outstanding issues, the one issue that you referred to that is still being worked?
Yeah, I'll, just to be perfectly frank about it, that is the issue that I was hoping we would have made more progress on prior to the administration of this new parking regulation.
Is there a... Is there, I mean, can you illuminate us, I think it's a very important issue, and we need to resolve it. Is there any explanation that you can give of why it hasn't been resolved, or is there somebody here who can speak to that?
I think that there are people who will speak to you tonight. The way that it's been expressed to me is that I think members of the homeowners associations have objected to there being a sense that that needs to happen before the new regulations are administered, or that one is tied to the other. I think there is a view that they are separate issues, that you'll probably hear expressed from the HOA tonight, and I don't disagree with that point of view. I think substantively, they're different policy questions and different policy issues. I had been hoping that we would resolve both issues, just while we're engaged together on these issues, that both could be resolved at the same time. And I think there's still an opportunity to do that, but it hasn't happened at this point.
Okay, well, I look forward to hearing, I guess, from what folks have to say. I've just read the letters that came in this afternoon, and it seems pretty clear that the city council, one reads, will be going, giving consideration to a permit parking request from the residents of Winter Hill, is sort of the way, the lens through which at least this writer sees it, and I think there were several others that were written with that in line. What you're saying is what we're talking about is really broader than just Winter Hill, but yet, there's negotiation going on between the city and Winter Hill, and both parties have things that they feel and things they want, and I'm just curious as to, what's going to be the action that moves a resolution of the issue that you identified if we don't give you more time to resolve it? But perhaps we can hear from other folks, if you've spoken your piece.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shields, are there other HOAs or private property parking lots that have this paradigm in place where you're not allowed to access the parking lot to enforce the property tax stickers?
Not that I'm aware of.
So this would be the only one in the city that you're aware of?
I believe so. I may need to think about that just a little bit, just to think across the city, but I'm not aware of any off the top of my head.
And so, does this also apply to, let me ask the question differently. What happens if I have a car on my property and forget, and it expires, but it is on my property? Does the city property tax enforcement authority have the right to access my driveway and knock on the door, put a notice? What's the procedure here?
The general principle is that we would need your permission to go onto your property to issue a citation for that. And so that's the permission that we are granting generally from commercial property owners across the city. We consistently ask for that permission. And we do not go door-to-door, however, to ask for that permission driveway by driveway, but where we have larger homeowners associations, or condo associations, or property managers, we make that request.
Okay. I thank you for that clarification. And I think it's important to keep in mind, at least for me, that this seems to be the only HOA that doesn't feel that it's necessary for the city to have these rights of permission in advance, as it were. But I look forward to hearing from the neighbors as well. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? If not, why don't we hear from, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Why don't we hear from the public speakers who wanted to speak to this issue? I'm just going to go ahead and read the names. If there's anyone else, you're welcome to put in a speaker slip. If you could, please keep your comments to three minutes. So the first speaker is Diane Bartley.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. I've really been looking forward to meeting you all tonight. Really appreciate you taking the time. So I am Diane Bartley. I'm the vice president of the Winter Hill Community Association. I'm looking forward to answering a number of your questions. I'll keep it brief within three minutes, and please let me know if there are any other questions I can answer. So first of all, big thank you to the city manager's office, specifically to Mr. Shields, and also staff member Jeff Sykes. As you mentioned, we've had a long and very productive collaboration over the last few months with our neighborhood, and given all of the exciting development that's taking a place across Falls Church City, it's pretty clear to me that the city manager's office does need to have all possible tools at their disposal to help mitigate the impact of major new commercial development projects that are immediately adjacent to established residential neighborhoods. It's also clear to me that although I do stand before you tonight representing Winter Hill, that you'll be soon be hearing from many other neighborhoods in residential neighborhoods who border these new commercial developments, and who'll be very appreciative of the ability to change the code and to enable the more flexible permit parking policies. I do want to address the fact of, and some of the questions about the HOA giving access to the parking lots. I personally have gone on record supporting that. I have no problem with folks coming into the parking lots and, you know, having a look for decal compliance. Mr. Shields and I have spoken multiple times about that. We have brought that up at our HOA meeting back in January. We fielded a number of questions from residents. I passed along a pretty long list of questions to Mr. Shields a couple weeks ago, and he has committed to giving me answers to those questions, and I have further committed to putting that issue on our board meeting, the next board meeting, which is on April 20th, and we look forward to discussing that with the neighborhood. Again, as I'm sure you all appreciate, I am but one vote on the board, and so there are other, you know, board members, and there are a number of other neighbors. You will hear from other folks here tonight who have, you know, questions and opinions on the matter. But again, I am, you know, of course, fully in support of tax compliance, and as we've discussed numerous times, I think this is something that we can work out. You know, I also do, however, see these issues as fundamentally separate, which is why I'm very hopeful that you will still be able to move forward with the policy change tonight as we continue to work with you on the access request. If I can answer any questions, please let me know.
Okay. I tell you, are there any questions for Ms. Bartley right now? Maybe you could be on standby. Actually, before you go, let me just ask you, for the prospects of that being approved, I know you're just one vote, but you are an officer on the HOA.
Yes, sir.
What are your thoughts generally of the, you know, the mood of the board for the measure that Mr. Shields has requested?
Well, I know I have at least a few folks who are in agreement with that. I know that there are some other folks who are opposed to it at the moment, but at the same time, you know, I think that once we get additional clarification, we have some questions on, you know, what exactly the parking enforcement officers will look for. We have questions about visitors. We have questions, you know, sometimes we have folks drive in from other states. We have folks come in from other jurisdictions sometimes where they don't have the decal. We wouldn't want to inconvenience visitors and having people be targeted. So Mr. Shields has already provided some of that information, and, you know, we do, again, have some additional questions. So I think that once we understand better the scope of, you know, exactly what the request is, I think that's going to help allay some concerns.
And do you anticipate taking action on the 20th?
That is my objective. I have it on the agenda. I would like to vote on it on the 20th, yes.
Okay. I want to, unless there are any other questions, why don't we move on to other speakers? But if you could be on standby, we may come back and
Absolutely.
...speak to you some more. Thanks for coming out. Our next speaker is Lana Morau, I'm sorry?
Moraviak W. Likavieh, how do you do?
I figured that. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out.
Well, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the city council, and citizens of Falls Church, and neighbors. And I just wanted to say that I would hope that the city council, which I think does a lot of fine work, would be able to approve the residential parking for Winter Hill. We come from, like many micro-communities in the city of Falls Church, a community which is very dedicated to our children, and we have many, many children in Winter Hill. And we feel that since we are in an area which has been, which has a dense construction at the moment, that the amount of cars circulating in the neighborhood right around Gundry, Annandale, and James Street would represent a danger of people looking for parking spots, the increased traffic when the Harris Teeter opens, and the, when the apartments fill up, that it is going to represent a danger to our children to have that increased circulation if people are looking for parking spots. And not to mention that we don't have enough parking spots as it is in our area. So we think that because we are in the shadow of this very dense construction, that we would like to have that, both for our children, to keep the circulation of traffic down, and also for our own residents who need the spaces. So those are the two issues I wanted to address. The third one, I have no problem with access to our parking lots personally. I do feel that they are really two separate issues, and don't really impact the, the first issue doesn't really impact the second, but that's how I feel about the access. I think our police force does a wonderful job, and they should have access to enforce tax decals wherever they want, so.
Thank you very much.
That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Casey Ramey? Case, I'm sorry. Case Ramey?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Case Ramey. I live at 275 Gundry Drive. I want to echo the thanks to all those who have worked to make this possible and to speak in support of passing the residential permit program and the amendments, so that we can move forward with a very important piece of work to my community. I have two children. I have supported the development that, and the path that this city has taken in fostering that growth in our city, and I want it to be done in a way that is safe and effective. I urge, please, that this be passed, and it be passed now and separately from any other issues that can be addressed with the private property. I have a number of questions about having access to my private property, our private property, for the tax decal enforcement, being treated separately and differently than my neighbors who happen to own a single-family home, and why they are able to have a space where their car can sit while they deal with very important issues that may have prevented them from taking care of issues in a timely fashion, where that's not a privilege that's afforded to me because I choose to have a smaller footprint, I choose to live closer to the city center. I have made those decisions. I would like to see those issues treated separately and those questions resolved before we move forward on that part which we have some disagreement on, and which it is unclear, and that there is not a consensus in our neighborhoods. Personally, I've had, already had problems where a housekeeper who was taking care of my home for me was ticketed while she was parked in my one assigned parking space. Our HOA, each residence only has one assigned parking space, and so the majority of our cars are on a public street for some great deal of time, and are perfectly open to being enforced already under the current guidelines without access. As I said, I have those questions. I've already had problems with the enforcement, and so I would very much like to see these issues treated separately, and urge the permit parking to be acted on now, and to move forward with it while we address the very serious issues and questions that we have about access to the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dee Ellison. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I appreciate it. I am an original owner at Winter Hill, and so I've been around a long time. And of course, as with every development everywhere, parking has been an issue from the beginning, with us not having enough parking spaces. So it's only gotten worse, and it's always a challenge. I too thank Mr. Shields and the staff for spending time and energy working to prevent parking problems in our neighborhood, and you'll hear me say some of the same things that the others have said as well. As I think all of you know, the taxpayers in Winter Hill have voted overwhelmingly, 94% of respondents, approved to support public permit parking. So we are, of course, responding to the 282 apartments now leasing in the Harris Teeter project, and we all know that the developers have not provided sufficient parking for new residents. The condos, as I understand it, do not come with the parking spaces. People have to buy those separately, and if they don't, what are they going to do with their cars? Well, nearby streets are the likely parking spot. So for tonight, I urge you not to defer action on this issue, but instead to vote to approve this tonight, and to put in place much-needed parking restrictions as requested by Winter Hill. And I agree that other issues should be considered separately, as Mr. Shields said. Today's agenda said that from a public policy perspective, the city approves mixed-use projects with the expectation that they provide sufficient parking for their tenants, and as I said earlier, that's not happened here. Having, according, again, to today's agenda, having parking restrictions on nearby residential streets can protect against undue overcrowding of neighboring streets. That would be ours. Such restrictions will also help to maintain the character of lower-density residential neighborhoods, said the agenda. So again, I urge you not to defer action on this, to treat any other issue separately, and to put into place tonight the much-needed parking restrictions as requested by Winter Hill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next, and it looks like last, speaker on this matter is Robert Appel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your work on these issues. I've lived in Falls Church quite a long time. I've driven the streets, daytime, nighttime. I'm retired now. I have driven in at night, and I have driven around, and if we didn't have a, our own assigned parking space, there would be no place for me to park. And I think that what will happen is there will be a lot of cars coming from the Harris Teeter to park, and they're going to park down around us. And that will force people coming who live in Winter Hill to park even further away from their own place, and you're going to have a problem of a lot of traffic spilling over into the adjacent streets. Now, I think, so I think that the council really doesn't have a choice. There has to be resident parking there. And with regard to the other thing, I, you know, I'm buying a house. I pay for the maintenance of a parking spot. I pay city taxes. I pay taxes on the street. I really like to have the feeling that I'm in my own home. I come, you know, and I go out to the back. Is there going to be policemen there on a routine basis? No one who has a private home and a driveway, they don't have anyone walking up their driveway. So, and I have a question, okay? Does the council intend not to approve the resident parking unless the association agrees to have the police come in and police that area for expired stickers and that kind of thing? So is this a quid pro quo? Because I think the council has an obligation to let us have residential parking, because the Harris Teeter will not begin to have the capacity, they're not even planning on it, for the cars that they have there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we have one late arrival, one last speaker. Mr. Baruch, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you. God, it's a little different being on the side, I have to say. My name is Nader Baruch, and I live at 243 Gundry Drive, Falls Church, Virginia, 22046. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak on these issues tonight. I wasn't actually planning on racing down here, not quite as fast as Mr. Z drives, but I think I was getting there. But I wanted to first thank you all for considering the parking ordinance, but I did feel But I did feel, as I was listening to some of the comments on the way in, laying out kind of where I'm at as an individual, and I think I've expressed it over the phone with some of the members earlier today, I'm one of the members that is very appreciative of the parking ordinance. I think it's extremely important, so I commend Mr. Shields and others for actually putting the administrative pieces together. I think my view has been that the city manager already has the general authority to put into place ordinances like this, or rather enforcement measures like this, but I think this gives him the added oomph to actually make it happen. So I'm glad that that was worked out and that it was worked out with the HOA in a meaningful way. So I wanted to first of all thank the manager and city staff for working through those issues. But really, the reason why I'm here this evening is once I saw the, the deferral, I was a little disheartened, to say the least. And that's primarily because of some of the comments, I have to say, I heard earlier that the issues are decoupled, but they're pending the resolution of access to the parking lots by city officials. And I addressed this issue when the topic first came up several months ago, and publicly and privately, I support the notion of our enforcement officials having access to the parking lots. I think it's good policy, et cetera. But what I do object to is the issues being put together. I think this is a prime example of where it's hard enough to get agreement on parking restrictions and parking hours, and yet, for whatever reason, the issues seem to have come together and are going to take the community in a direction where we're not going to reach consensus potentially and really divide the community about access to the parking lots in a, in a way that's not helpful and in fact is harmful and is not going to get us ultimately to what I think is the best public policy reasons for that. Furthermore, I don't think the robust discussions about why having access to the lots is important. For me, it's an issue of equity, et cetera. And also, in my view, having more enforcement individuals in the neighborhood is, is a good thing, not a bad thing. But I understand that there's others who view it differently, and I respect those views, and those have to do with property interests and also equity on the other side, that if you have a single-family home, law enforcement doesn't have access unless you grant it, and perhaps that's the way it should be. And that's why it's a voluntary thing. That's why it's part of the proffer process. But I don't think that other HOAs, at least that were pre, pre-proffers, if you will, where the majority of them actually have this.
Mr. Mayor, that was three minutes.
So I'd be interested in hearing that, but I don't think that's the case, that, to Mr. Z's point, I think there are several HOA communities that don't have this type of requirement. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We wish you and your family the best. That is the last speaker that I have. If there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, please come forward. If not, the public hearing on this matter is closed and is with council. Are there any council comments?
Mr. Mayor, anyone who drives or walks around Winter Hill knows that there's a, a parking crisis, frankly, and we need to act on it and support the neighborhood. So I support moving forward tonight on this. I also think that it's a show of good faith on the part of the city and will increase the likelihood that we'll get a solid vote in support of the, the parking enforcement on the, on the private lots. I think leveraging what needs to be done to something that the city wants sets a dangerous precedent, and therefore, for these reasons, I'd like to move to adopt TO 16-01.
All right. Do we have Ms. Oliver?
I guess I support all of what Mr. Snyder has said. I do, however, have a policy concern about this ordinance. It's an operational ordinance that's adding a tool to the, the manager's kit, but it speaks to an issue that's growing within the city. I mean, this is not going to be the last community that asks. You know, we are moving down the path that Arlington has towards having residential zones and parking, and, you know, the whole, the whole city could become balkanized slowly over the next couple of years. And I'm concerned that in considering this ordinance, we have not looked at that, and I'm also concerned that your fiscal impact does not properly capture the long-term fiscal impact to the city on this. This estimate of $5,000 refers to implementation of the first program, and it does not talk about enforcement. And for those reasons, I would like a little bit more information about how you see this progressing over time. I'm not sure that a month makes a big difference on the parking for Winter Hill. You know, that said, I'm not opposed to making this change, I just don't think that we have been given enough information to understand the long-term implications of what this could do.
Other comments? Questions? Let me ask you, Mr. Shields, just maybe you could let the public know how this program would work. Can you go into some of the details just for the benefit of those folks who might not know the mechanics of how you imagine this plan being implemented?
The, and sort of the broadest outlines, the residents of specific streets in the city, and these are all essentially the members of, in this first rollout, the members of the, of Winter Hill Two Homeowners Association. We're in discussions also with the condo association, and I think we'll treat the two separately. But the residents would receive a sticker for each car that they have registered in the city, and that would be the pass for that vehicle to park on the public right-of-way in their neighborhood. Each homeowner would also, or resident, would also be issued a book of visitor passes, and those would be able to be used by visiting family members or, or whatever the case may be, if they happen to be staying overnight. The, the enforcement hours are nighttime enforcement. Essentially, the behavior that we're trying to regulate is residents from outside the neighborhood parking a car or essentially storing a car in the Winter Hill neighborhood overnight. That's, that's the behavior we're trying to regulate. We're not trying to keep people out during the daytime because the daytime hours would not be subject to regulation. This is, be a nighttime regulation. Those are sort of the broad outlines. If people request additional visitor passes, there'll be a procedure by which they can get those and, and those types of things.
And would it be a lifetime of the car pass, or would you get an annual renewal?
Do you recall? I, I don't recall in our write-up. Our thinking is that it's a lifetime, so for the life that car, you get one sticker and it's put on the car.
And then whether there be charges for the sticker or any other charges associated with this?
We, in the program that we've rolled out here, we are not administering a charge for the sticker.
Mr. Z, and then Ms., Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that it's important that we continue to be known as the little city that gets stuff done. So I, I think this ordinance that we have in, in front of us is, we've talked about this in the work sessions, and we've talked about this in council, and I don't know that we need much more discussion about this, and I think that we act on a good-faith effort and approve this tonight, that I'm sure the HOA will both the way it's supposed to. And I do have a request for the city manager, which is to identify if there are any other HOAs or organizations in the city that are in the same category as Winter Hill with respect to a debarment of access.
Okay. So that I can answer a little bit simpler. I thought you had asked, that, that, that you anticipate, that we, we either have administered parking regulations on adjacent streets or anticipate that we will soon. If that, that was the question that I wasn't sure about. So a question about HOAs that have debarred access, I can get that information to you. I understand the question more clearly.
Great, thank you. Glad we could meet.
Vice Mayor Connolly.
I just have two questions. Which streets exactly are we talking about? We mentioned Anadale, James.
And Gundry.
And Gundry. But not Virginia?
Well, Virginia is really principally a separate association, and, and so there are two different tracks of discussions going on, and it's possible that that neighborhood will choose differently than Winter Hill Two, which is the subject of the petition and most of the speakers here tonight.
But again, what we're approving now just gives you the ability to do this with either neighborhood and any other neighborhood when this.
Yeah, or future streets that might petition in the future.
Okay. And then my second question is just, so what's the timeframe on this? If we approve it tonight, do we have to have a second reading as well?
This is, this is before you on second reading tonight.
All right. And then what's the timeframe after that? How long will it take you then to enact this, to put up signs? Would that be a three-month thing?
No, it's sooner than that. We've been working with Public Works in terms of the plan for getting the signs out and things like that, so this is, with the action tonight, the rollout will be a matter of weeks, not months.
So I've got a couple of questions for you. What's the approximate occupancy of the Harris Teeter building?
I don't know the answer to that. It's probably about 10% occupied at this point.
I mean, that's what I was thinking, looking at the windows. And I wonder if there's a way to make this revenue-neutral in terms of having a nominal fee, like, you know, $25 for the sticker or something like that. I don't know how that plays out to it, but, maybe people don't like that idea, but it just seems to me having something revenue-neutral wouldn't be, as long as the fee was low enough, wouldn't be unreasonable. I'd also, I'm not sure how this is going to turn out, but I would just say in general to the neighbors, I think everyone on council is cognizant when we build, approve a new project that we have to take care of the neighborhood in as many ways as we can, whether that's parking or parks or other aspects of that. So I'm confident, no matter what happens today, whether it's approved or deferred, that in the near future, there will be parking mitigation matters for your neighborhood and for any other neighborhood that we approve a project, abutting, you know, an area where parking is a sensitive matter. I think that's part of the commitment we make when we do approve these projects, and that's why we've looked at some of these things proactively. For Mason Road, for example, those discussions began even before the project was approved. And so again, I'm confident, no matter how, whatever happens tonight, in the very near future, there will be something in place that'll help protect your neighborhood. Are there any other folks who want to make comments?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Yes.
I, I wonder if Ms. Bartley, I, I feel like we're putting words in her mouth to some degree. I mean, sometimes we can overthink these things. I mean, it seems to me like the city has something that it would like, and residents have something that they would like. And I'm not entirely sure, given that the building is only at 10% occupancy and the grocery store's not going to open until July 20th, why we would not give staff and the HOA time to, you know, continue to amicably discuss and resolve this matter so that council really shouldn't be in this. I mean, I'm not quite sure why, if we're at second reading, this hasn't already been resolved. I mean, I understand that there are issues and people have philosophical positions and so forth, but this really is a pretty basic, we have something we would like and you have something you would like, and, you know, we should be able to get together on this. Ms. Bartley, you said that your board meeting is on April 20th.
Yes, sir.
I mean, is, is there anything you can tell us about how that vote's going to go? You have any, I mean, you've got 94% of the people who want something.
Indeed.
You know, I, I can't speak for the council here, but you've got at least one council member who is 100% wanting what the city has spoken about, and so, I mean, can you, can you give us any indications of whether the winds are blowing favorably, and, and if, if not, what can we do to make them blow favorably?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I think that's a very good question. And, you know, I think a lot of it has to do with the continued conversation with Mr. Shields. Again, we've been very appreciative of all the information that he's shared so far. There are a couple of questions still outstanding, and I think, as you heard from some of the neighbors who spoke tonight, there are just some questions and just trying to understand when we say we're granting access, what does that mean? What exactly are folks looking for? How often are people, you know, coming onto the site? There are just questions about that. And, you know, again, I'm sure that everybody can understand, not that the single-family homes are in question tonight, but if you were asked a similar question about folks coming onto your single-family home, you would have similar questions about what that entails and what the scope is. So I think that's most of it. You know, you did hear from some folks who are fundamentally opposed to it. As I mentioned, I personally am not opposed. There are a number of us who are in support of it. I am a reasonably persuasive person, and I hope that I can, you know, carry the day. And, you know, again, I'm just very grateful. I know that you all have a lot going on with budget and everything else, and for you to take so much time to interact with the neighborhood, I personally am deeply grateful, and I know that the rest of us are as well.
Thank you. I think you proved that the only job harder than being on city council is being an HOA officer, which is what I've heard.
Don't get me started.
What I've heard from a cousin who retired from that job.
The only better paying job.
You know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to put myself in the position that you're in, maybe in about two years, not on the HOA, God forbid that. But I mean, I'm talking about the impacts of development. I mean, I live on West Street, just down from where Mason Road is. I'm pretty sure that, you know, when Mason Road opens up, there, we're going to have some of the same issues, and I live in a single-family home. I don't have a garage. We didn't have enough money to afford a garage, so.
Right.
You know, I mean, I could envision a discussion with my neighbors on West Street who would, would want to park on the public street and, and want to have a designated parking place on the public street because our driveways aren't big enough to fit our cars when our housekeeper and our children and, you know, Aunt Gertrude comes to visit. Okay, I get all that.
Yep.
But, you know, if I want that, if I want to be able to park on the public street, then I feel like I should be willing to give up something, and, and if, if, you know, equity of tax payments and so forth is something that the city wants, that seems like a reasonable discussion to have, and, and I guess I would like to arm you and the city manager with all possible persuasive tools to be successful, because I, I think this policy does set precedent for what's going to happen in other neighborhoods, and I, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable, particularly since we're so, April 20th is not that far away, and, you know, the building is not overfilling with people right now. They're, you know, the, the parking issues that are there now are the ones that have been there for 40 years.
Correct.
I don't know. I, I mean, I, I would, my subs, thank you very much. I appreciate your, my, my preference would be to amend the motion if, if Mr. Snyder wants to keep it on the table, or to offer to defer action, as the staff report says, until, I would make it the April 25th meeting of city council. By that time, your board would have had time to have met, and this, we would know. We wouldn't have to be guessing, you know, what's, what we're aiming at here.
And sir, if I may ask a question?
He's the mayor.
It depends on what it is. But go ahead, please, of course.
I will give every best effort, and as I said recently, to Mr. Shields, help me help you. Give me enough information, and I'll continue to work with the neighborhood and, you know, do my best to work this out amicably. If I am not successful, what will happen?
I'm not sure of the answer to that question, and I'm not sure we're going to get to that question because we have a motion on the table as well.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I think what Mr. Duncan is asking, that you give it a good try, and I think that would probably make the most people happy, is to try to work this out in some fashion or the other. But I think everyone does want to make sure your parking needs are taken care of to the extent the city can help do that. I, I think that's unquestionable up here, so I'm very confident, and again, whether it's tonight or it's a month from now, whatever it may end up being, that your parking situation's going to be addressed through this legislation.
Thank you.
But I think that remains to be seen where we're going to go tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, just procedurally, I think we have a motion on the table, but I don't think you've had a second at this point.
I second the motion.
Now, wait a second. Now, wait a second. Is there any comment from anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think the taxpayers, and there are quite a number, that have asked for this thing to be done. I think it's reasonable. I think we ought to move on it tonight. I think it improves the likelihood that the neighborhood will want to come back in good faith and respond. I hope that they do. All the arguments that are made about taxpayers and the need to have everybody pay legitimately or entirely well-in-keeping. I'm very concerned about the precedent, however, of attempting to leverage something that we ought to do based upon the neighborhood or an individual giving up a certain right which they may have some issues with. So for all those reasons, I think we ought to move forward tonight, and I would hope that the neighbors would respond appropriately and assist us to collect the taxes that in turn benefits all the honest taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have other comments? Do we have other comments, Ms. Oliver?
I agree with what Mr. Snyder has said, and I would just ask Mr. Shields that we come back to the broader parking policy. Questions about what access residents have, and when it's appropriate to put restrictions in, and what costs should be borne by residents who are using the streets, recouping our costs, and also understanding what this program is going to cost us when it rolls out to the entire city. I'm willing to defer that discussion, because basically, what we're asked to do tonight is to give you the ability to issue a different kind of permit, and I'm not opposed to that.
Other...
Could I ask, so are, are, is there a suggestion that we defer action? I, I think those are interesting questions, and ones that I would like the answer to also. Are you suggesting that, that we defer action on this item until those are cleared up, or not?
I said that I'm prepared to have Mr. Shields come back to us later on, on the broader policy issue, than on the particular motion before us tonight, that we give him the ability to issue a different kind of decal, that we go forward on that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, other comments from anyone? I would note this was advertised as deferral. I hope that didn't cause people who might have otherwise wanted to come out and speak tonight to fail to, to come to the hearing anticipating a deferral. But we do have a motion on the table that's been seconded. Are there any other comments that any member of council wants to make? If not, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to one.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. Let's move on to the next item, which is our many-budget items, and I understand, I think by law, we have to read each and every one of them and open each and every one of them up to public comment. Is that correct?
I think they're here tonight for first reading, and so I, I think you do not have to do them all separately. That will come when you have the public hearings, which will be, I believe, April 11th and April 25th.
Okay. So we don't have, we don't have to call for public comment on each of these items separately?
You do not.
At this time?
Because, that's correct, because they're not here for a public hearing tonight. They're here on first reading.
Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to just read a disclosure disclaimer. I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2017 city budget. My wife is employed by the Falls Church City School System, and I am therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the approval of the FY 2017 budget. Nonetheless, I can participate in the, in the transaction fairly objectively in the public interest. Vice Mayor Conley?
I'm also going to make a declaration. I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration, as we go into city council's consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2017 city budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the approval of the FY 2017 budget. I can, however, participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. So before council on first reading are the, the series of ordinances that are associated with the budget that I presented to you two weeks ago at your meeting here in this room. And since then, we've had the town hall meeting, the open house, and we'll have what we typically have, which is three public hearings on the budget. Traditionally, even though tonight is not an advertised hearing, there's an opportunity for the public to speak on all of these items, then again, on April 11th, and, and then on April 25th, which is the scheduled night for adoption. I think it's very important for the council to know that by taking action on first reading, you're not adopting the budget or endorsing the budget. You're putting the budget out before the, the community public, and the public to comment on. And for all of the ordinances, changes can be made between first reading and final adoption. For the, the revenue items, including the real estate tax rate, the personal property tax rate, and the utility rates, the adopted rates can be lower than what you adopt on first reading, but they cannot be made higher than what you adopt on first reading. I won't go through a summary of the budget again. We've, we've had a couple of opportunities already to do that. I do, I will just note for the council, the, the one change that we're grappling with since the budget was presented to you two weeks ago, is the information we've gotten from the Virginia Local Choice healthcare provider. Their premium increases are much larger than what we factored into the budget, and on the general government side, that will cost approximately $100,000 to resolve that. On the school side, I don't know the exact figure of what that will cost, but I believe it, it is north of $300,000. Those are things that we're grappling with in our budgets. I know the school board's going to discuss that at their next meeting, and we're working internally on, on how we would address that issue. So I won't go through all of the budget items, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from council on, on any of the whole package of budget or revenue items.
Okay. Ms. Hardy?
I guess while we're on the topic of the healthcare premium increase, to make sure I've got my numbers right, I think in the initial budget discussion, we talked about a gap of 1.1 million. Is that gap now 1.5 million, given the 400K increase in premiums?
Well, in the budget that I presented to you, there, there's a balanced budget with a two-and-a-half cent tax increase. So if you took that tax increase away, then yes, that would be, that would grow the gap by that amount.
See, before we get on to that, if you could just hold on for just a second. Madam Clerk, I don't think you've called the items. Have we not called the...
We didn't read them. Would you like me to read them?
Please.
Okay. We have TO 16-05, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues, Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2017, General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, and School Food, Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund and Stormwater Fund. We have TO 16-06, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 1721 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2017. TO 16-02, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Tax Year 2017. TO 16-03, Ordinance Setting the Rate and Tax Levy on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools and All Other Property Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2016. TO 16-04, Ordinance to Amend Section 4089 of the Code of the City of Falls Church to Set the Cigarette Tax Levy and Rate. TO 16-07, Ordinance to Amend Chapter 42 Utilities to Revise Sewer Rates and Charges as of July 1, 2016. And TO 16-08, Ordinance to Set the Stormwater Utility Billing Unit Rate in accordance with Chapter 42, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, as of July 1, 2016.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Snyder?
No, Councilmember Hardy, I think I had some additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I guess as the follow-up to that, since we're talking about over a penny on the tax rate to fund that additional gap, what are the, what's the thinking, I guess, on how to close that? Like, are we really talking about a three-and-a-half cent increase?
The, among the options that we're considering on the general government side, we have built into the budget debt service for the items such as the backhoe, the four police cars, the other sort of one-time expenditures that would be financed by debt. If we delay those purchases toward the second half of the year, the debt service is reduced, and that's how we would absorb that increase for the premiums. One other issue, though, that we're dealing with is that for employees, as you deal with that premium increase, that will give a substantial number of employees an actual decrease in their take-home pay after the, even with the, if, if the merit 3%, increase is approved, they would still have a negative change in income. That's another issue that we're trying to work through as a, as a separate issue. That's the basic strategy on the general government side. On the school side, the gap is larger, and I don't know if Dr. Jones is prepared to speak to what the schools are considering in terms of strategies.
You don't have to come forward. If you have anything in mind, come forward. If not, we'll hear from you when the time is right.
The school board's discussing it tomorrow.
Okay, that, for the public who can't hear from back there, the school board's discussing it tomorrow night. Other comments or questions from Mr. Shields, or comments in general?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments. The, I want to focus on the capital program for a minute, and I want to thank the news press for covering the discussion so accurately on the city hall, because it's very important for the public to understand that that's very much in motion, and that it's a 16, 17 million-dollar project. So I want to recognize everyone who was involved in that debate, regardless of what issue they were on, and the news press for covering it so that the public knows that that expenditure is out there. And then we got a letter from the library about not wanting to go to referendum on that $8 million project. My question is, if we vote on this first reading today, are we precluding referendum on both or either one of those projects in the future? And I think the city attorney was about to comment. I think she was saying no. Is that right?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Because what I want is a fulsome community discussion. I also want it clear to the community what the debt service will be on those projects collectively and separately going forward, so they understand what the add-on will be in each and every out-year's budget. And I want to thank the city manager for the presentations at the work, at the open house that we've seen so far, and his solid work on this, and his work on the prior issue. That's not the point at all. The second point is that there are some things on the unfunded list. Being about 200 feet from the Capitol Visitor Center today, I was reminded, as I was waved off by a police officer carrying an M4 shortly after the shooting, that we live in a dangerous world, a world frankly, which I didn't grow up in, and it argues for the very best police presence we can possibly have. In discussions with the chief, it appears that we need the, an or more additional police officers sooner rather than later. So it will be a consistent concern of mine during this budget process, that we come to grips with what our needs are, and that they be included in this year's budget. I don't know exactly how that's going to shake out. I don't know whether we need to make some cuts in order to make that happen, or how we're going to go about it, but I think that's an issue for, for me and our citizens is too fundamental to get wrong. So I just, that will be utmost in, in my thinking on this, to make sure that we're adequately providing for public safety. Those were the comments that I wanted to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions to make sure I understand what, what we're voting on here. So, Mr. Shields, the TO 16-05 document has embedded in it the assumption that the tax rate would be 134. Is that what I read on line 23?
That's correct.
Okay. And TO 16-02 is, would set a tax rate of 136, is that right?
That would set the advertised rate at $1.36.
Right, the advertised rate. Okay. So the current tax rate is $1.315, right? But there's no document here that, that represents a budget that is built around the current tax rate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Then the other question I had, the other night, I had asked if you could provide some information with the cooperation of the schools on trying to get a metric to use as a benchmark for the school transfer. I'd ask about the enrollment increase from September 15 to September 16. No, September 14 to September 15, right? We don't have 16 yet. Okay, so there we go. 14 to 15. The, 14 to the current school year. And the information you gave, gave me, does it say that the total increase in students was 40? Is that, is that the right number?
Going off the information from the school budget presentation, as, as I read it, going from FY 15 to 16, because we do have numbers for the current fiscal year, for enrollment for this year. Enrollment in 2015 was 2492, and FY 16 is 2532, for a total increase of, of 40 students, or a 1.6% increase.
1.6%. And that is the actual enrollment increase, September to September. I'm sorry? Tony, is somebody, no, we're not hearing.
Let me give you a second.
Okay.
It may not have preschool, or it may not have our outplace students.
Okay.
So we don't, for those of us who are not in the room, we actually don't know the exact answer to what the enrollment from September 14 to September 15 number would be.
In, in the budget, in the school budget document, there are enrollment numbers, and I believe that this is what they are.
Okay. It's astounding to me that it is so difficult to get the answer to that question, but whatever. The, the second question I asked was your best estimate from the BLS of the rate of inflation, and you've got two sources that peg it at about 1.01 or 1.02, call it, you know, 1% increase in inflation. So my question then is, if the enrollment growth is 1.6%, the inflation was 1%, if the transfer to the schools increased by a percentage that reflected enrollment growth and inflation, the baseline would be about 2.6% based on the numbers you've given me here? Is that correct?
Well, you've, so you're using an inflation measure of 1%?
Yeah. Is that, is that...
It's, 1.4% is what the Bureau of Labor Statistics has.
Oh, 1.4, okay.
Going from January to January.
Okay.
And again, so if you go from December to December, it'll be a different number, but, you know, pick one, and you get a number.
Pick whichever number seems the fairest. I'm not trying to make a number up. So you say one, okay, so 1.6, so 3% then. So if we built the budget around the transfer being inflation plus enrollment as a starting point, it would be a 3% increase to the schools. Does that, do you have the numbers that would tell us how that would match up to what the gap would be, or what the needed tax rate would be to finance that?
Well, if you just take what the, the 2016 transfer amount to the schools was, which was $38,417,900, and increase that by 3%, that's a 1 point, or $1,161,000 increase. And so that's, that's what that would be.
So at a tax rate of 131.5, you would be providing the schools with $1.161 million more than they got in the previous fiscal year?
Well, at 3% growth, you'd be generating that number we just gave, with the money that's available is $1,109,000, so there'd be a $51,000 gap on the school transfer amount.
So you'd be $51,000 short with your...
That's correct.
Okay. So 131.5 would not quite get you there if you used the 3% as your, as your number, but it would come pretty close. I mean, $50,000 is, on an $87 million budget, is, even in Little Falls Church, close enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions or comments? Okay, see, I'm going to open it up to the public then. It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot more discussion to be had, at least at the moment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item or these items, feel free to speak, you do a speaker slip, but welcome, Mr. Kalin. You're welcome to speak. Please submit a speaker slip, and you're welcome to come on up and, and say your piece.
I did submit a speaker slip.
You did or did not? You can go ahead and do it now, if you'd like. So we're going to have Mr. Kalin speak in just a moment.
Can I ask that question?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Shields, this is, while Mr. Kalin's getting his speaker slip, back when we did the... the investment into the pension plan, one of my requests was that I wanted to make sure that it was marked and starred in the budget every time so that it wouldn't get lost for the next council and the next 10 years or wherever. So where is it in the budget? Where can I see where that investment shows up, or that return, or that lack of payment? And I know this year we didn't get the $700,000 we were hoping for as a return, but I'd just like to know where it is.
Well, because there is not a return, the investments were made in two pieces.
Right.
Half the investment was made in December, and half the investment was made in May.
December of 2014?
Of, uh.
2015.
Of 2014.
Okay, so December 2014 and May 2015.
That's right. And so what will happen now going forward, well, so what will happen going forward is that investment then will be looked at on July 1, what the investment returns were. And once we know that that figure is, then eight months later, it will show up in the budget. We will take those returns and put them into the next year. And so that process has not yet happened. It also so happens that there were no investment returns. The markets were flat during that period of time, and then they decreased over the month. They're sort of coming back to their own now, finally, but over, between the timing of the investment and July 1, there were no returns. So there are no funds in this budget with investment returns.
But when there are, because we fully expect there will be.
Yes.
Where will we find them?
We will show those.
Will there be a line somewhere, a fund?
We'll show those as a revenue source, and the council's intention was, in the resolution that laid this program out, that the investment returns would be used to help finance long-term capital needs. And so we will show that as going against debt service for capital projects. That's the way we intend to show that going forward.
So when it shows up, will you just tell me where it is? Thank you.
Was there any return on that money? I know we invested some of it at the VACO, the long-term capital, at a higher rate, right? We adopted an ordinance to allow investment in the VACO, I don't recall the name of the vehicle, but that allowed higher returns. Did we get any investment return on the $9 million or so we had for long-term capital?
Well, the money that's sitting in the city's cash funds, not in the pension, but
Understood.
We have invested that in the VML VACO pool, but understand that we increased the budget to reflect those anticipated revenues last year. The rates are not any higher, so there's no new revenue for that in the FY '17 budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kalin, welcome. Thank you for filling out a form. We want to keep records of everyone who speaks, so we appreciate you coming out tonight and filling out your card. Welcome.
Thank you. Ira Kinn, 429 Park Avenue, and I'm sure you're thrilled to see me tonight. I can just imagine you couldn't sleep last night waiting. Just to summarize a couple things from the tenor of this discussion, I was out of the country for a while, so I was unable to participate. It's almost guaranteed there'll be another tax increase next year. We're not addressing the fundamental structural issues that plague the city. Mr. Snyder, I do have to tell you about the issue of the funding of the City Hall improvements has been an item that was discussed practically for the four years that I was on, or the three and a half, so this is fairly old news about what it was going to cost. The issue of the referendum is another issue, but if you want to expand the number of police, you're going to have to have a place to put them. I mean, it's interrelated, so it's necessary. And in terms of the overall expenditures going forward, it's probably relatively bearable compared to some of the others that we're looking at. That's about all I can say. This is not really going to create a long-term solution for the financial stress of the city, but I won't go into, it's not a topic for three minutes. I'll try to write an article on that. Just want to let you know, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address counsel on this matter? I'll get to you in just a second, Mr. Z. Is there any member of the public who also wishes to address counsel? See none, the matters are closed to the public. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. At every juncture in the budget process, I remind the great citizens of the city that my wife and I have lived in here, the city, for nearly 30 years. We've never had a child in the school system, but we've gladly paid the taxes regardless of the rate they were set at. We've been strong in support of all the sectors and the things that make the city great and a special place, includes grade schools, fair tax, a well-designed city. This is no secret, I'm sure, to any of those that follow the things I've been saying. So, along with some of my other colleagues here, I've supported a proper, well-designed economic development process, and we do have some great projects that are about to come online here, and hopefully there will be more real soon on the schedule that we were presented. And that just means that at some point here, we've got to start to take advantage of the money that's being realized. We can't say on one hand, well, we need to have economic development so that we keep the tax rate low, and on the other hand, well, let's raise it some more this year. So there's got to come a point in time when we say, okay, let's take a tax holiday, tax rate increase holiday for as long as we can. I think it's probably going to be this year, and only this year, that we can say, hey, we kept it flat. And I think that we're close to being able to do that if the good offices of the city and the schools try to work out something where they give this council and the school board an opportunity to say, you know, this is what a flat tax rate budget would look like. And so I just want to, I probably don't have all that data here in front of me, because it's, you know, plowing through all that paper and even non-paper over the last year or so. You know, we paid for TJ HVAC repairs, and, you know, since I am a design professional, I ask, is it possible to do HVAC repairs without affecting any of the new work that we've just done? I was told, no, it's unrelated. So, and I, okay, we accept that face value, even though we know that we separate the HVAC repairs from the other repairs, just so we can stay below the bond referendum issue. We've also paid for trailers. You know, I don't know what condition those trailers were, but suddenly last year, we had $600,000 worth of flood damaged trailers, and they're on the way here anyway, so let's go buy them. We've moved the school buses from a school-funded activity to a city-funded activity. I'm sure there are probably a couple more, but, you know, these are small peanuts compared to the $485,000 we paid last year. We're going to pay this year for a Mount Daniel project. That doesn't seem to be going anywhere fast. And that upsets me. I think it upsets the taxpayers of the city to know that we are going to spend almost a million dollars this year, as well as other costs, and we don't have an elementary school to show for it. As far as I know, this 232 process is stuck in the water, dead in the water. There's no schedule in Fairfax to have a hearing on this anytime soon, if at all. And now we understand the bond can only be used for Mount Daniels. So, now folks, it's not like a mortgage. It's not like, oops, we can't build a school there, so let's spend the money somewhere else. You can't do that. And you can't say, well, we're not going to build the school, so let's cancel the bond. You can't do that either. You bonded the thing. The city is on the hook for the next 15 years or more to pay $485,000 to the market. So, I think there are things coming down the line here that are going to have a major impact facing us to be able to replace school facilities, city facilities, and we have to be conservative with our money. So, for that reason, and there are others, I just think that we just have to be able to say, okay, we're living within our means. We're going to keep the fund balance robust, the capital reserve fund robust, and let's give the citizens of this fine city a break for a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Other comments? Okay, we've got Ms. Oliver?
So I just want to recap where I think we are. We're at the starting point of the budget process. We've got two public hearings coming up. So what we have to do tonight is agree where we're going to start. Every time we start the budget process, there's somebody who says we don't want to have any tax increase. And every time we start the budget process, there are people who say, one or more people who say, we left important things out of this. So I think what we want to do is we want to make sure that we start with a budget that what we approve tonight gives us the room we need to have the discussions and to make the compromises. And according to city code, we can't increase the revenues after the first budget hearing. So, I'm reluctant to start with a low number, because you can't go above that. Correct, Mr. Shields?
That's correct.
And there will be discussions about items that we may feel need to be added, and maybe we'll take something out in order to put them in, or maybe we'll need a little bit more money. But where we're starting right now is the beginning of the process. And the revenues, we can't increase after this. The expenditures, we can increase and decrease. And so I think it's just important to signal where we're going to start, and I think that the seven documents that have been put forward are a good starting point, and they give us some flexibility to move forward and have some robust discussions, and they don't guarantee that the rate is going to go up to the advertised rate. And I'm, you know, I'm sort of pleased that we're at a reasonable starting point, and that we can have some of the conversations we need to have about some of the longer-term issues, and whether this budget allows us to make any progress on them or not.
Thank you. What I might suggest we do is start going through the resolutions, and we can pause when there's a place for further discussion among council. I think many of these items will not require any discussion, but instead of trying to get all of it out of the way right now, why don't we just try to bang through some of these, and when there's a time to have some discussion, we can stop and pause and have some more conversation. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and start and see if there's a motion for the first item, which is TO-1605?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on first reading of TO-1605.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
No.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries five to two.
Okay, the next item? Do we have a motion for that? Would anyone like to make a motion on the capital improvement program?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on first reading of TO-1606.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, and it should be obvious with the votes, but in case it's not, I too want to get to as low as possible responsible tax rate, and I want to have the CIP projects thoroughly discussed and considered by the community. But as Councilmember Oliver well put it, you've got to start the process in a responsible way. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Conley.
Mr. Shields, on this ordinance, TO-1606, line 3536, the planning commission has recommended two cents for transportation and one cent for capital reserve. Is that within the 134 that we just voted for, or no?
No, it is not.
We didn't vote on the 134. The tax rate will be the third item.
But it's not in the budget document either.
But that's not included.
That is correct.
So those are other unmet needs that the planning commission recommended we include. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Are we, yes, Ms. Hardy?
Associated with the CIP, do we, I guess when the time comes, issue bonds to fund things in the CIP? Those will be separate things that come down the road?
Yes, those will be separate actions by the city council to authorize the issuance of the bonds, and as well as authorize the contracts for the various different CIP items.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Duncan, did you second? Okay, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to one.
Okay, the next.
For TO-1602.
Yes, the next item. Do we have a motion for the next item? This is setting the tax rate.
I move to grant first reading to TO-1602, schedule public hearings on April 11 and April 25. Schedule second reading and final consideration on April 25, and advertise the same according to law.
And just for clarity for both ourselves and the public, that rate is 136, Mr. Shields?
Yes, the rate that is in the ordinance that's before you for first reading is $1.36.
Okay. So that is above your budget request, which is 134, to my recollection. Is that correct?
That is correct. And again, the reason for this recommendation is to provide the council with the flexibility as you go through the budget process to address needs that might come up, or set aside funds for future capital needs.
Okay, so again, this is two cents higher than your budget currently proposes. Okay, is there any discussion on this item? I would just say, before we get started, I'm not going to support this increase. I am willing to have a conversation about additional needs and, you know, the possibility of going higher than a flat tax, which is ultimately my goal, but I can't see myself supporting a $1.36 rate going forward, so I will not be supporting this motion if there's --
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, what do we advertise if 136 does not make the cut?
If the motion that's on the floor is not approved, then alternative motions can be made. A tax rate, this ordinance does need to be adopted, some form of this ordinance needs to be adopted tonight on first reading.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the table? I'm sorry.
Yes, we don't have--
Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, I just wanted to make similar comments that I don't think we should, well, I don't believe in kind of keeping taxes flat for the sake of saying that we should keep taxes flat. I think if we give ourselves too much room, we will naturally fill it. It's kind of like when you buy a house with five bedrooms, you never think you'll use all of them, you just naturally end up using all of it. So I'd rather we force the conversation and talk about trade-offs, and get to as flat and low a tax rate as possible. So I echo a lot of the comments made.
Okay, other comments, or, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the past, I've, well, all the times in the past, I think I basically supported the resolution on the budget, both rate and the ordinance as it's come before, thinking that we would have a, be able to have a discussion on what's equitable for the city. And so it really comes down to, where do you draw the line? You just go along with something, have a conversation, and end up somewhere different than you would like? And I just think that this year, we're able to hold it flat. I think we're going to have some really breathtaking increases in front of us. Not to scare anybody, but I think we're going to have some really breathtaking increases in front of us. But CIP, for example, here that we proved, has $4 million to buy land to build a school on, even though it's called land acquisition. It's school land acquisition is what it is. So we have all that in front of us to think about. So let's call a spade a spade, which is what someone here said tonight. If we can, let's hold it flat, and that's where I'm at on this thing. So, I'm not going to vote for a 136 rate. Thank you.
Okay, other comments, or should we go ahead? I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused, but do we have a motion on the table for 136?
We don't have a second. We have a motion, we don't have a second.
Okay, is there a second on the motion that's on the table?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second. Unless there's any further discussion, why don't we move to a--
Mr. Mayor, just to signal where I'll be, and I appreciate the discussion all around. I do think we need a little flexibility. I think the city manager's budget does maintain the quality of the schools, and I'm thinking we're going to have to address some things. So I'm not going to support the 136, because I think it sends the wrong signal that we can go up-- can go up, but I will support the 134. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we want to go ahead and call a vote? It sounds like we don't have support for this, and I'm happy to go ahead and vote on it anyway, or we can withdraw the motion or amend the motion?
You could amend it, but you could also just take a vote, and then a new motion could be made.
Sure. Well, I'll ask the people who made the motion if they have any preference. Would you like us to vote on this nonetheless? We're happy to go ahead and do so. Ms. Oliver?
I still think it's a fiscally conservative thing to do. You know, by city code, we cannot increase the revenue after we advertise this. We cannot. And we have to ensure the long-term fiscal health. And we may restrict ourselves to very draconian measures if we do not have any flexibility. So although I understand that people are unhappy with that number, I just don't want to start the process without any flexibility.
Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't you call the, Ms. Conley, did you have something to say?
I seconded what Ms. Oliver proposed before, and I agree with what she said. I think we, with the large capital expenses that we have coming up, I feel like there's more information coming at us all the time regarding our campus project and regarding City Hall. And if we restrict ourselves now, we may regret that later.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead then and call the vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Z?
No.
Mayor Charter?
No.
And the motion fails two to five.
Okay. So we do need to have a motion passed tonight, so let's keep trying. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we advertise a tax rate of 134.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion to be had? Anyone wish to say anything? Ms. Hardy?
I guess ultimately, I'd like to see it much lower than 134, but to Ms. Oliver's point earlier, I think we do need some flexibility in there to talk about how to get there. And I think there's some critical items on there, like traffic calming, transportation match money, funding the capital reserve that I think we need to get to.
Okay. I'd also just like to make a comment, if I could briefly. The past two years, I've supported flat tax budgets, and I think that's where I'm headed this year as well. But I'm willing to keep an open mind, and so will support this motion as well, and give us the flexibility to at least have a discussion in the meantime. Any other comments, or should we go ahead and take a vote? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries five to two.
Okay. Let's keep on moving. The next item is the personal property tax rate. Is there any discussion about that? As you may recall, the city manager's proposing an increase in the personal property rate. If you could refresh our recollections, Mr. Shields, what it is currently and what you're proposing?
The current personal property tax rate is $4.84 per $100 of assessed value. I'm proposing a 3.3% increase in this rate to $5 for each $100 of assessed value. This would apply to business tangible property as well as what is familiarly known as the car tax.
Okay. Are there any comments, or should we take a motion? Mr. Duncan?
Oh, sorry. Could I just ask a question? Is there a calculation of, you know, how this affects the average typical taxpayer, homeowner?
Yes, in the presentation two weeks ago, the calculation was provided, and if I recall correctly, it was $27 for the median vehicle in the city. And I should, just while we're speaking of it, the purpose of this tax is exclusively to fund transportation improvements. This will allow us to access NVTA funds, and so for every dollar that we raise here, we will be able to access additional state funds. It will count as our commercial and industrial equivalent tax revenues. So the city does not have a commercial tax overlay districts. All of our neighbors have 12 cents on the real estate tax rate for that purpose. This is a step in the direction of having dedicated revenues for transportation improvements in the city.
Okay, do we have, okay, we've got a question. Ms. Hardy?
Mr. Shields, could you refresh our memories on what our neighbors' rates are for personal property and the cigarette taxes?
On personal property, Arlington County has a rate of $5. Fairfax County is $4.57. Fairfax City is $4.13. Alexandria is $5. And the city of Falls Church currently $4.84, and the proposed rate is $5. On cigarette taxes, I did not provide that information, and I'll need to get back with you on that. I know that there are some jurisdictions that are at the 85 cent rate that I've proposed, but I don't have that chart in the staff report.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Z? I'm sorry, Ms. Oliver?
I was just going to say that because ordinance TO 16-02 passed at $134 and not the manager's recommendation of $136, that if you, if we don't pass this ordinance, we will have to go back to the first one because the budget will no longer balance if we don't pass this ordinance as it is right now. There's no flexibility. Right?
Yeah, that is correct.
I mean, the current expenditures, it will not balance. Expenditures could be cut, though, if need be. But I think, I don't know if there's any controversy about this particular matter, but we'll find out. Mr. Z?
Well, yes, Mayor, I was about to move to grant first reading to TO 16-03.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Are there any comments? If not, why don't you go ahead and call the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Can we, is there any discussion? If not, why don't we go ahead and have a motion?
I move approval of TO 16-04. Madam Clerk, is that the one we're on?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Thanks, I move that.
All right, do we have a second? Ms. Hardy on the second?
Second.
Okay. Any comment, or let's go on to a vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, let's go on to the next item.
And that's TO 16-07.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Mr. Shields, brief summary?
Just, I would note that the council has increased rates in years past to deal with the plant upgrades in Arlington County and Alexandria to comply with the Clean Water Act and Chesapeake Bay Act. This rate is a 1.4%, a requested 1.4% increase in the sewer rate, which reflects the CPI index. Essentially, our sewer fund right now is at balance, and this would allow us to continue to operate at the level of service currently.
Okay. Any questions, comments? If not?
Just a question, median household impact on this one?
I'll need to get back with you with that information.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on first reading of TO 16-07.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Z on the second? Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. That takes us to TO 16-08.
Okay, Mr. Shields, anything to add?
This is an increase in the stormwater fee of a 2% increase from $18 to $18.36 per 200 square feet of impervious surface. These revenues are required to pay for debt service for capital projects. The average cost per household is $5 per year of this increase. The overall cost of the utility is, on average, $255 per household.
Okay. Any other questions or any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Z?
Mayor, I move grant first reading to TO, excuse me, 16-08.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Conley on the second? Will you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Is that the last of the budget items? Okay. Let's go on to the next item, then. Will you call that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have TR 16-17, resolution approving procedures for the procurement of construction management at risk.
Okay. Mr. Shields, or is that going to be Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins will present on this. I would just note that this was discussed last week in the context of the City Hall project. We're taking additional time for further discussion of the City Hall project. But meanwhile, this procurement form, which could be used for the City Hall project or for any project in the city, these procedures are recommended for adoption just as a piece of administrative housekeeping.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I think Mr. Shields summed it up pretty well. This is procedural action that's required under the Virginia Purchasing and Procurement Act, Virginia Public Procurement Act, excuse me, VPPA. It simply provides the boundaries within which the city would be able to utilize this innovative type of delivery method for construction.
Okay, for the general public, could you just give us a brief synopsis of what it is and then what the derivation of it is or where the document came from?
Sure. The construction manager at risk is an alternative delivery method for construction. The primary benefits of it are that it brings in a construction professional throughout the design process. So you get a team that's integrated, and the person that ends up building the project has been heavily involved in the design of the project. So it reduces the likelihood and the impact of change orders, which means reduced costs and reduced schedule impacts.
So is this essentially getting a construction manager, like an independent construction manager, to supervise construction?
No, it's similar, but it's actually different. You are bringing on, in this sense, I think construction manager is a misnomer to the way we frequently have used it historically in our industry. In this sense, it really is a contractor. The construction manager here really is a contractor, although he operates by hiring subs. But it's, he's not the traditional construction manager working as an agent for the city. He's integrated into the team, and ultimately, the real, the real unique feature of this type of method is that it's a two-phased contract. So for the first part of the contract, the construction manager is part of the design team, and he's paid a specific lump sum to be involved in the design review, provide cost estimating, provide value engineering and constructibility estimates. Then, at the time that the design documents are ready, he kind of puts on a different hat and negotiates a guaranteed maximum price, and then turns into more of a traditional contractor at that time. The controls on it are that by him being involved throughout the design, he has ownership and responsibility for any changes or any oversights or omissions that were, that were not found during the design. And that provides a level of protection for the city.
And so would this person or the company have liability for overages?
There are shared liabilities for overages. There are very specific liabilities for overages.
Okay. City Attorney, have anything to add?
Just that often that you end up, rather than, you might have shared liability for overages, but really you end up with more of a guaranteed maximum price because the construction manager who has been involved in the design and has had a chance to have input at that point then is more committed so that they don't blame the owner for design as is often the case in the traditional design bid-build. But they have a certain level of responsibility for that work. I think it's also, should be noted that the construction manager is not the traditional just advisor manager, but they are limited as to how much of the work their own forces can do. They have to use contractors, subcontractors, to do a lot of the work. And so that's why they're called a construction manager in this case, because they don't do all the work that a contractor would do by its own forces.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Ms. Hardy?
It does sound like this approach reduces the likelihood of change orders, which is a good thing. Given that you have the construction manager involved earlier throughout the process compared to traditional design build, does this increase the cost, given that you have someone involved much earlier? And then the second question is, do we have examples where this model's been used in any projects that we know of?
Yeah, to take your first question, it does, it provides a greater likelihood that your overall project cost is going to be lower, in my opinion. I don't know that there are any scientific studies on that. But by, again, by having the manager in there, you're getting a more accurate representation of the cost. In a traditional design bid-build contract, it's not unheard of that you get a contractor that manipulates the bid, comes in very low with the expectation of making up money on change orders. So if you took the same project, did it, construction manager at risk versus design bid-build, you might very well find that at the CMAR, your guaranteed maximum price is higher than your bid price, but you'll typically find your overall project cost once you get done with your bid price plus any change orders that that contractor found. I think you'll find CMAR is less. Did that answer your first question well enough? As for other projects, this is becoming a very, this, this delivery method has only been used extensively in municipal construction over the last decade or so, heavily in facilities projects and many schools projects. We have been in touch with many of our neighboring agencies, such as Arlington County, Alexandria. We talked to Virginia Department of General Services, spoken to some of the HRSD, some of the service authorities around here, HRSD and Alexandria Renew. So many, many agencies are starting to use this for exactly this, a project like City Hall.
No specific examples of anything that's done yet?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. There are several that are in farther along than we are. HRSD, no, theirs is under, no, I can't think of any completed yet.
Where I'm going is intuitively, it makes sense that the cost would be lower, but it's always nice when the proof's in the pudding.
Nationally, this is a very common delivery method. Virginia was, nobody in Richmond's watching it this hour, they were slow to get on the bandwagon, so we're a little bit behind the times. bandwagon, so we're a little bit behind the times.
In my conversations, and I can't cite to you any projects, but I did speak with someone down at the University of Virginia, and this is basically the method of delivery they use for all of their projects, and they have, in particular, it's important and complex projects. They've had some huge hospital construction projects and things like that, and they have, they have used it quite successfully, and they're very happy with it. And I will check with him again about actual completed projects, because I believe they do have some. I just can't recite them off the top of my head.
Okay, and Mr. Z?
I certainly appreciate you coming forward with this. It's, as you've said, it's been in use in the last decade or so, and while the jury's still out on whether this is the best way to do it, I think that having a guaranteed maximum price is very attractive to places, municipalities that have to bond to a price specific, so. In your discussions, either City Attorney or, or you, Mr. Collins, have you, are you able to identify some leading CMA or firms that, that might resonate with us?
Well, I don't, I think you bring up a very, an excellent point. One other facet of this type of delivery method is that your construction manager is selected on a qualifications basis, so you're not held to simply the person that showed the lowest number on a napkin. You actually select a contractor based on his experience, his qualifications, complete the job. And the impact that that has and the protection that provides us as a client or as an owner is that construction management firms have to, it's in their very explicit best interest to follow through on a project, to hold to that guaranteed maximum price, to be a collaborative partner, because their next job depends on the reference from this job that they're completing now. So having said that, we do not, I want to be at liberty to say that we've identified specific firms that are well qualified to do this, but we have the ability and we, using this tool, we will be able to really delve into and find the details and get references and base our, base our partner upon those experiences.
Well, Mr. Collins, just to cut the chase here, it can't be that difficult. I was expecting names like Peter Keywood or Parsons Bergerhoff, WSP, somebody, you know, just somebody that I would recognize instead of, you know, going through qualification and come up with so-and-so that has a great resume. I just, you know.
I have, I have spoken to a couple of construction management firms who have expressed interest in it. I don't, don't know that it would really be appropriate to talk about which ones I've spoken to in this forum.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, or should we go ahead and, let me open this to the public? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter's closed to the public? Do we have?
Mr. Mayor, it's 10:00.
Is that Ms. Oliver?
No, that was me.
Was who? Oh, there it was. I thought, I was expecting that from Ms. Oliver, but it didn't sound like you. Okay, it sounds good. Is anyone prepared to make this motion, or should we go home?
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue the meeting past 10:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. One no, any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. Let's, even though we've got the aye vote, let's go ahead and try to keep on trucking and get this meeting over as soon as we can. So do we have a motion with respect to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on first reading of TR 16-17. Is that first reading or resolution?
It's a resolution.
I move approval of TR 16-17 resolution.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Okay. TO 16, whoops, TO 16-11, authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city of Falls Church a project design administration agreement with Fairfax County for the design of pedestrian enhancements, enhancements and signal improvements on Northwest Street.
Okay. Mr. Collins, are you here to speak on that as well?
Certainly. Evening again. This is a project agreement between ourselves and the county of Fairfax. We were notified about a year ago by Fairfax County Department of Transportation that they were developing a pedestrian improvement project along West Street immediately outside the city from Breland Place, excuse me, Breland Place to the intersection of Great Falls and West Street, portion of which, a portion of their work was going to intercede into the city. They called us to talk about how we should handle that, and we let them know that we had in our CIP, a signal, well, intersection improvement project at Great Falls and West Street. We started talking about opportunities to prosecute the two projects more efficiently, and we came up with an agreement by which we would utilize Fairfax County's existing consultant. They would manage the design of this. We'd be involved in every aspect of the design, but it really provides some efficiency to ensure the two projects correlate together, correlate to each other, are designed and integrated with each other, and it should provide some really, really good efficiency and economy for the city.
Okay. If you could mention the overall cost and what specifically is entailed with the project, briefly?
The, the, the design cost for the city is, I believe it's stated at $39,000, which is quite cheaper than we would be able to get it if we were doing it as a standalone project. Overall, the project, our portion of the project, construction, design and administration is budgeted at $600,000. That's a fairly conservative estimate, though. We think there will be money left over.
What specifically are the improvements?
The improvements would include a new traffic signal, mast arm traffic signal, which would remove our span wires from the Dominion poles. Dominion has expressed concern about our traffic signals on their poles, and we would provide pedestrian improvements on at least three of the four corners and crosswalks on at least three of the four corners. There will be some property acquisition challenges here.
And how about the fourth corner? You said three out of four. What's the issue?
Yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to really look at the survey and then talk with the property owner and see what we can do, but that one is, it would be a pretty significant impact on that property, so we may just be able to get away with three corners.
And which corner is?
So the, the fourth corner, which would be really the eastern corner, northeast, but it's the eastern corner, it's an acute corner, the current right of, the current improvements or roadway is partially on that land.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Mr. Collins, that's, this is a great project and a gateway to the city. It's great that we're going to be able to get something done there. ADA compliant crossings, but that doesn't mean that, although someday we might have sidewalks on both sides of Northwest Street, that's not really contemplated.
Well, it would be, we would have landings, and so pedestrian facilities at the corner on both sides of West Street on that west or south of Great Falls Street. So those two corners would have pedestrian improvements.
And that's good. And it mentions enhanced lighting, too, because one of the real problems there, particularly once you get a safer place to stand and cross, is this is pitch dark.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So that's good. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Hardy?
So I guess a clarifying question after Mr. Duncan asked about it. So we're adding crosswalks and landing places for people to cross, but then there will be no sidewalks on the length of West. So once you cross, then you're just back onto the street?
There is, if I recall correctly, I believe there is sidewalk on the east side of West. So yes, it's, it will provide a, on the north corner or the northwest corner, it would just be a landing which would allow you, though, to get from the sidewalk, which Fairfax County's building in Breland Place, excuse me, from Breland Place, crossing Great Falls Street to that corner, crossing West to an existing sidewalk. It's not an ideal, you know, and if I were designing this new today, I would do it differently, but we do work with the fabric that we've got.
Question on the costs. You mentioned 600,000 was kind of our share of it, and here it mentions 300 would be from sharing state funds and 300 local?
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't as clear as I should have been. I, I meant our share as opposed to the county's share, but you're right. Of our $600,000 share, 300 of that is VDOT revenue sharing and 300 is the city match. So 300 in city money to pay for up to a $600,000 improvement.
And this was something under previous CIP that we already approved and?
That's correct.
Bonded, I guess?
The improvements are intended to be bond financed, and it is also part of our NVTA funding as well. So this expenditure is a local match to be able to access additional NVTA funds.
And the City Attorney did just request that I clarify for y'all that the agreement we're talking about is only, only covers the design portion right now, so there will be further actions on construction.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
And to clarify, that was that 39,000 that got it?
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Oops, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
Moved it up, TR 16-11.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter's closed to the public. Madam Clerk, please call our vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, and we're on to consent items?
Consent items.
Two items on consent, and then if Mr. Z could handle the appointments. The two items that I will cover is first authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to amend the contract with Finley Asphalt and Sealing to expend up to $1,316,750 for roadbed reconstruction projects. These are specifically to do roadbed reconstruction on Lincoln, portions of Lincoln, Walnut Pine and Sycamore Streets, west of Northwest Street, and on Roosevelt Boulevard between Wilson and North Roosevelt Street. The second item is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to amend the contract with Virginia Paving to expend up to $479,500 for the primary extensions paving project. The city engineering department went out and, and applied for VDOT funding through their primary extension funding program to allow us to do more paving than usual this year, and what we're targeting is the entire stretch of Washington from city line to city line, with the exception of the areas that are going to be paved by the Lincoln at Tenor Hill, the area that's going to be subject to the Intermodal Transit Station and the utility undergrounding that's happening there, and then the little piece on North Washington where we're doing the streetscape improvements. Everything else, we plan to pave this summer, and, and that's what these funds would be for. This is entirely VDOT funded.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the city manager a couple of questions?
Of course.
About those two items? Since they combine to be about $1.8 million, it's a significant expenditure. So my question is, since a lot of these roads are really throughways, not all, but a lot of them are throughways, are, are we using money that ought to go specifically for city purposes for throughways, or is this money that legitimately is intended for that purpose and we get from the state? Do you see where I'm going with this? Are we spending local tax money to do work on streets, some of which may need it or maybe not objectively, or is this, are we sort of acting as a pass-through for state funds which would pay for this kind of road, which frankly, these are not neighborhood streets?
Yeah, the, the primary extensions, extensions money, which is the $480,000 authorization, that is exactly as you just characterized it, Mr. Snyder. It is state money for the, for the primary route. So the only roads in Falls Church which could qualify for it would be Route 29, Route 7, and Hillwood Avenue also. So that money is, can only be used for that purpose. For the Roosevelt Boulevard, that is revenue sharing money, which is specifically, our specific grant for that money was for roadway reconstruction. Roosevelt Boulevard, that is, as you mentioned, it's not a neighborhood road, but it is a significant infrastructure investment that we've got to make. It's a road that's collapsing.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Z?
And then further on the consent calendar, then, council's asked to consider the following appointments, the reappointment of Dennis Zimansky to the Tree Commission and a new appointment of Thomas Cash to the Environmental Services Council.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Any member of the public wish to address these matters? Seeing none, the matter's closed to the public? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. There have been no items removed from the consent agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda anyone on council would like to bring up? If not, are there any council member comments? Mr. Z?
Just one, that the second solarize contest, now including the fine city of Fairfax, in addition to our old adversary, Vienna, kicks off here in the city of Falls Church on Sunday, April 3rd, down at Clarion Downs, from 2:00 to 3:30.
That sounds good. I tell you, we are still trying to come up with a bet. Well, one of the suggestions was that the losing mayor dyes hair green. Fortunately, that, that didn't go very far, and there wouldn't be much to dye on my part. But anyway, so we're trying to come up with a fun bet, but not too fun. So that's under consideration, but anyway, that's good, and I'm glad you're working on that, Mr. Z. Are there any other council member comments?
Could I move that that be the bet that the mayor's having?
You can move it. We're not going to have a vote on it.
Do we have a second?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that recycling extravaganza is this weekend, right? So everybody recycle. And also the Athletic Boosters mulch sale deliveries this weekend, and I understand they're still looking for people who will help haul the mulch and the student athletes who deliver it, so sign up with the Athletic Boosters to volunteer for that job.
Sounds good. Okay, we're on to, unless there are any other comments, we're on to approval of the